Um, mayor, councilman. So we had our, our workshop a few weeks ago. And then um. We went back and we started pounding on it some more. And the biggest change was we added a number of projects for twenty-four, twenty-five. Also updated some revenue, but the, we're spending into fund balance quite a bit because we're starting to accrue quite a bit of fund balance and I'm having to justify that to the state auditor and so we, since we accrue fund balance for projects, we're gonna use it to do some projects, um, streets and primarily. The list that is on page eight of right behind the revenue. So I did adjust the revenue a bit to more closely because we've gotten a whole another set of number, sales tax, property tax, installments. And so I adjusted the, the per, the estimate going forward. And, and then we added a, a number of mostly the city match for the snow removal equipment at the airport and the city match for the snow removal equipment building at the airport. We did add those to come out of the general fund, um, reserves because the airport is in the general fund. Um, our, it looks like our revenue is probably gonna be down a bit. And so we don't need to transfer any additional, um, money to the city reserves to meet the twenty-eight percent emergency reserve percentage that, um, the council decided on a, a year or so when I first got, got here, a year or so back. Um, that was a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer. And in, uh, in fund, what is it, twelve? The ending cash balance is one point four three nine and the twenty-eight percent amount is one point four three two. So we don't need to add any more money to that. Um, I can go through the summarization for the citywide totals. We are requesting seventeen point eight oh four million. And, um, that's an increase of roughly four, four million from last year. We are spending into reserves because the citywide cash balances started off being ten million and the end after the revenues and expenses, um, were projecting to be eight point two million. Still pretty hefty sum in our reserves. So, um, I am open to any questions because George, I can just see question marks flying out of your head.
I had hoped to spend a little more time than I did, but just on page seven, we, we must be classifying some things. And I zeroed in on the airport deal because landing fees this year are year-to-date forty-seven hundred. You project estimated five thousand dollars and we're budgeting zip. Um, and then when I compare that to the actual activity from, and the actual activity for twenty-two, twenty-three was zero, but on the airport hangar lease, we had twenty-six thousand, three thirty, actual activity for twenty-two, twenty-three. And this year it's fourteen thousand, so. And I know probably some of that is a lease to the airline that they quit us. Are, are they overnighting here and leasing already?
I don't know what the, what the story with the airport is. Um, we also are no longer receiving the TSA, um, reimbursement grant for having officers out there. TSA is still there, but, um, we may lose that office lease in the future too, simply because they may not need it. They may just come each day rather than have a le, office lease. And that's under. The shop lease, I believe.
I think the shop lease is actually the FBL lease is what that is for. But we may have to look into that a little bit more to verify where we're at on it.
Yeah.
We'll make a note of it and see if we can come up with some answers and send them out to you guys.
And then a couple of, um, in forty-two is Cemetery Parks and Rec. Our regular salaries were a hundred and sixty-two thousand for twenty-two, twenty-three. And we're budgeting clear up to a hundred and ninety-four.
In that fiscal year, George, we were down one, one gentleman or one full-time position out there. Um, and that's the difference that we've got on, on that one. So now we're back to full s- no, we just lost another guy here in June. So we're not even full staff out there, there, or at the parks.
And Aquatic Center, um, I know we've been short of, we budgeted for a director, but I, I don't know if that's materialized.
It actually has. We just offered the position to a, a young lady who's finishing up college and have we've gotten the.
First will be effective October one.
October first, yes, as per her request. And so we're budgeting for that for this next year, uh, but we will be not having that aquatic supervisor position completely filled until then. It's on an interim basis.
And just because of allocation rules that we, that we have established as far as the admin salaries are allocated, um, to, to the different departments. So part of G is in that line too.
So now that we have allocated that as October one, we will need to increase for next year. When we did the first reading, we weren't sure, George, whether we could increase that way for next year.
So you're saying Janet, sixty-four is not accurate? I thought it was after our conversation, or maybe I misunderstood.
I'm not, I'm not sure if they said, I don't be quite sure it's enough to talk like lion abner's, and the gorilla, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Either that or we have a seventy-eight too, Paul, for twenty-two, twenty-four.
Okay, um, well, that's about as far as I got, um.
I just wanted to make sure that also as per your request, George, we did allocate funds fifty-one or fifty through fifty-four on those accounts, the allocations that you asked us to do.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that, yeah, fifteen hundred dollars.
Yep, that's for the chamber cost. And then we also allocated the unused funds as per your request. And we used the audit at numbers from the twenty-two, twenty-three numbers for that. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, um, was that we do have, um, a water line that's being proposed, uh, by a local citizen here that is wanting to do two blocks of water main, um, over on the western side of town, uh, that hasn't materialized, but it is gonna be under fund seventy-one, which would be ninety. And that's gonna be a project worth about a four hundred thousand dollars that will be added into the next reading, but we weren't able to put it in there because we didn't have the information until just recently.
Well, it's gonna be an in and out, so it's.
Right, it will be no cost to us.
No net cost.
Approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand is what it is for that part. And then the, the other big dollar amount which, um, Michelle did allude to was that, uh, we did find out our airport allocation for the funds for the airport. Uh, we have a building for snow removal equipment that we're gonna be proposing that was not during the workshop for six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And like Michelle did say is that thirty-five thousand or thirty-three thousand, five hundred will be our share, the federal share will be six hundred and thirty-five, five hundred for the maximum dollar amounts. So we're gonna take advantage of those dollars that we have that are still available for us.
Okay, this, this water deal, is that individual seeking some grants or something?
Yes, we're actually going through the PAD, um, organization down in Scotts Bluff. He's, we're looking at, and Janet, make sure I'm saying this, CDBG grants that will be eligible up to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in those grant monies possibly. And so with the project that we're looking at, we believe it's gonna be no more than three hundred and seventy-five, but that is still only an estimate.
George, there is city matching money, however, the applicant, or if just needs the applicant, the benefitter says that he will actually pay the twenty percent city matching money. There's some, um, agreements that need to be worked out to make sure that that happens.
So are these CDBG money, new monies or are they old monies that are been revolving?
No, it's, it'd be new money, it's infrastructure money, so we would be going after.
Cause I, I noticed a lot of the CDBG stuff went away and then the state was asking for it back.
No, this is brand-new funding, so we have to, I mean, obviously there's other people that are across the state that are gonna be looking at the same dollars. So whether we're awarded or not, you know, there's a chance that we wouldn't be awarded.
The other thing I wanted to point out is on page eighty for the community development agency, the TIF projects, um, that is gonna change once I can get a number for the Heartland Flats receipts that, that will come in and we pay it on their loan. So, um, I don't know what that's gonna be yet. Hopefully I'll get that when I get the, the, um.
Thinking that will happen in twenty, like, next fiscal year?
I, I don't know. That's, I, I don't know a whole lot about it as far as where they're at in the, in the process, but once I get that information, I'll put it in there if we're still in the budget cycle. Otherwise it'll have to go in next year.
Kinda immaterial, but it's just a community reference. Um, with the little bit that they've done there, I can't see them getting in anything constructed prior to cold weather hitting.
It's possible. Yeah, I, and I don't know. I just, I'm, I'm trying to keep it on the front of my brain so I don't forget about it if we do need to budget for it.
Hey, Eric Klein. We've had a couple conversations with the developer just recent weeks about the notice to divide. And he's indicating thirty percent completion by the end of the calendar year and completion by the end of twenty-twenty-five. But I, I know if you's talked to our zoning building official, she would be very cautious about those numbers.
Their evaluation from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four went from a hundred and sixteen thousand to two hundred and thirteen thousand. So there is, there's been some change, but not a tremendous amount.
Yeah, it's all kind of this nebulous thing as far as I'm concerned and I just wanna try and keep my hands around that cloud, just to make sure it doesn't get away from me.
I think thirty percent is very optimistic.
Now, like Miles just pointed out, their valuations increased, but the increase is supposed to pay for the improvements that we put money out for. And until we put money out for it, we can't really get money coming in, can we?
Let's see, do they have, do we know if they've, if they've received the funds from a bond or their loan?
That, that valuation increase this way up because of the assessor increased valuations.
Increased the property value.
Yeah.
Not that there's improvements on the property, the property itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Assess adjustment.
Right.
Well, it'd be interesting to see how that plays out.
Ditto. I think we're all on that page.
Okay. So, council members, you got any questions for Michelle?
I have a few I highlighted and noted in my tablet and it's all gone now, so I'm trying to remember what I, what I had in mind. One of them was, uh, the, under federal grants, which is on page fifty-eight, um, was for the purchase of a ladder truck. Uh, it shows the one point four million and it says, uh, Senator Deb Fisher's question preparations on behalf. Um, I didn't think we got the one point four, I thought we only got seven fifty.
Yeah, um, Tom and I are geeking that out. Well, I, I, I got ahold of a press release that said that Deb Fisher secured additional funding, blah, 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 blah. And that it listed it and it said one point four million for Shadrin for, um, a ladder truck.
We saw that as well.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what I put in here and Tom said, I don't think that's right. And I showed him. And so we're just kinda hanging out, waiting. It is probably not gonna happen, um, in the next fiscal year anyway.
No.
But, um, I'll be interested when we get the, the grant contract, um, to see what that says.
And right now we've, we've been in contact with them and they said more information to come. But we don't know the whole fact. And it's actually seven seventy is what I am saying that they committed to us out of the one point four million dollar project. But yes, Michelle showed me the press release, so we're gonna be optimistic on it.
Straight from her office, yep.
That's what I saw too.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see. I mean, we're all human, they, maybe we're intending to say the project amount, but.
But it looked like on that press release that showed the projects as a full for all the communities that she's projecting to. So it's confusing.
It looks bad.
I mean, that's what you would wanna put in the press release. If you're giving a hundred thousand dollars to a million dollar project, you wanna say your domain, you know, you're getting funds for a million dollar project. Um, and on the subject of grant funds, uh, I was reading about how the, uh, state with all of the turmoil going on about budgets has been doing some, takes these backseas on some grant offers. Have we heard anything? Do we, is there been anything that you know of, Tom, that they're, you know, perhaps considering not, not dispersing funds for? I, my first thought when I read about that was the, uh, parks, uh, equipment, the game of parks, and I wanted to make sure that.
That's actually a federal grant that we've got for the national game of parks.
Okay.
So, um, whether the state's gonna do something differently and pull back some of their stuff, I'm not aware of it, but I've heard some of the same rumors.
Yeah, yeah.
And until we get some verification on anything, I, I'm gonna consider it as a rumor.
Yeah.
We do not have a grant contract, so yeah.
That is correct.
That's what I thought I remembered, yeah.
Yep.
So, and we're pretty good about not counting our chickens before they hatch. I just, uh, make sure that was on the radar too.
Along the same lines, there's been a lot of grumbling about the ARPA funds that were sent out to everybody. They're talking about clawing some of that back that's not been spent. I have filed the final, um, report on that, so we have fully spent it out and they know we have, so.
Hell, we are.
We spent ours, we did not waste.
No.
I guess I had one more question, I believe it was, that I can recall is in, I think it was in city transportation. I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier as Tom, um, asked us to, but I couldn't remember because I didn't have it highlighted anymore. But I think it was, I don't even know where it's at. If anyone knows what page transit's on.
Page sixty-one.
Sixty-one, thank you. Um, I wasn't sure how they were fi- figuring out the net revenue loss when they're spending more than their.
Well, the net, you know, the net revenue on the current year, the net loss, it, those last two, those two columns, the year-to-date and estimated end-of-year, that's gonna float around until we know what it is. And, um, but when we go, um, and calculate the net revenue for the budget year we're, we're currently talking about, I, I'm trying to get it to a positive amount. The thing is, is that department did two or three years under, maybe even more, under the general fund. And so trying to determine what the cash balance for that fund was when we spun it into its own fund was, um, questionable at best. And it may need to be adjusted. Um, at this point, there's other things that are, are overriding in importance as far as getting stuff done, but I would like to get with Julie at some point and, and we discuss what the fund balance should be. The problem with transit is that since we are, as a government, we're a service a, agency, we're a service company and we're not necessarily for profit. So we provide services and we don't necessarily make money on it. And that was part of why transit was in the general fund to begin with. But, um, it's been easier to account and, um, track their expenditures and their revenue when we spun it out into its own, its own fund. Um, so we're gonna probably have to adjust that a bit. But yeah, right at this point, that hundred and thirteen thousand negative cash balance, I would put money on that. It's not correct because general fund was responsible for their cash balances until we spun it out. So we'll probably have to put some money into the transit fund at some point.
That would've started out with zero, since it was in, in my opinion, and, and since it's part of the general fund. Then you establish that, so yes, you're correct. It would require a city authorization to transfer some general fund monies to, to have a positive balance, because otherwise I think it's always gonna be in the, it's always gonna operate in the hole. But then you have to inject your local match.
And.
To make it come out to zero.
And I calculated the local match as best as I could. The issue here is that what we call operating expenses and what they call operating expenses are not necessarily the same. And so then operating expenses and then total expenses are reimbursed at a different rate. And so it's like a little here and a little there. Um, it's gonna take me a little while to get it sorted.
I, I made a similar question, uh, and about the aquatic center. Is if it shouldn't be a separate fund because one, at one time somebody's thinking, is this gonna be a moneymaker? And I said, well, it could be a, uh, fund like utilities.
Dad, no, that never happens.
And, 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 you know, but, so, and, but you would get a clearer picture if it were operated on as a separate fund, how much the deficit is.
Mm-hmm.
And that, to me, is probably the reason the transportation, uh, fund was established as opposed to just having the revenues and the general fund revenues and then an expense like the administration department.
Well, that was a decision that Julie and I made together. Um, her state auditors were giving, were grousing about, um, it not being in its own fund and so they didn't have the visibility. So, um, so we decided to just go ahead and roll it into its own fund. We talked about it last year and, um, when we were doing the budget saying we're probably gonna roll it outs, out of the general fund in the next fiscal year. But so that, you know, that's what we did. And that twenty-two, twenty-three budget is actually the general fund numbers that came out of the general fund. So it's, it's a mess, but I mean, it's easier to start, to have started, it would've been easier to have started it as its own individual fund to begin with, but that wasn't, that wasn't done. I wasn't here then.
Well, speaking of, of fund cash balances too, I mean, if, you know, carrying a negative fund cash balance in this fund versus having a fairly positive cash balance in the general fund and then some other department funds, you know, uh, don't take offense when I say this, George, but it's all just accounting. If there needs to be a transfer.
This is very important.
This is why, this is why nobody sticks around for my general accounting reports. This is why, this is why nobody sticks around for my general accounting reports. Now, places I used to work at, they'd schedule everything of mine to the end of the, the meeting. And by then, everybody got up, got up and left except the trustees.
Oh, you're the star tonight. But, you know, if we need to make a general fund transfer, you know, to clean that up and then just do so on an ongoing basis every year to balance it out, I think that's fine. I think it's, you know, we have a transportation department, we know it's not going to make money. We know we're gonna be having our local match portion, we're gonna be, you know, needing to move money into there. It, it only makes sense, but, um, you know, speaking of also the state having some interesting ideas and the state auditor in particular. So, the state auditor is concerned.
It's not, it's the state DOT people that are auditing the transportation books. So, it's not even our state auditor that I submit the.
Yeah, but you were talking about earlier on, just referencing back to what you said earlier about the state auditor and our cash balances. Perhaps they're wanting us to make use of them. I mean, our, our practice, so long as I've been here, is that every fund carries a cash balance. Um, and we're pretty happy to have that be a healthy cash balance.
Positive.
Yeah, we love that. Thrilled by that. Um, but as far as what we count as our reserve and towards our requirements on what, well, our desires for a minimum that we wanna have and our maximum that we can't have more than, are they wanting to lump in these fund cash balances to our, our cash reserve numbers? Is that something they're gonna wanna cram down and say, you're carrying too much cash?
No, it's not ever really garnered any attention from the state auditor.
Okay.
It's, it's about, um, calculating the lid.
Yeah, the lid.
And all the different funds that, I mean, yeah, all the reserves and everything that we aren't spending this much on projects and so we're care, carrying forward a certain amount. Um, I just don't want it to get attention.
Yeah, no, that, that would be very fortunate if we could avoid it. And I, and I think using the cash balance is a good move. I think that's absolutely the way to go. We've certainly taken a pass on some projects that just didn't work out over the last, you know, four or five years. Um, certainly since, you know, the time I was in the mayorship, we had just add up, we had budgeted money and we couldn't spend, could not spend money.
That's generally the way, everywhere I've worked, it, that's the way it's worked.
Yeah, so I think.
We have great stars in our eyes about what we're gonna get done and then reality hits and it's a lot busier than we thought it would be and it doesn't.
Or we can get the equipment or.
Or the grants.
Supplies and materials or the grants or whatever, but then the, the money just sits in the cash balance. And so I think, um, going through a cycle of using that strategically and having our cash balances at a healthy target without, you know, garnering any suspicion from a state auditor who wants to, you know, write some exciting press releases, um, I think would be good.
Yeah, I just, I, I just don't wanna be put in a position where I have to justify the rollover reserves not having known what we rolled over, so.
So, should, I'm gonna ask the question, not knowing accounting at all.
Yeah.
My question is, is should we insert the audit number of the cash balance of a negative fifty-two thirty-one into that, uh, account for our present year for that to start balancing that back?
Start getting that.
Start cleaning it back up, but you know what your audit number is and you know what it is, and then you can say that is the number that we're moving forward for the following year after it's been audited. And, and I'm just asking the question, is that an acceptable way of doing the accounting process where you have those numbers, you know it's been audited, now we can say we're gonna move those monies on paper and say that, that cleans up that year at least for our following year?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a way to approach it ultimately, it's you guys' call. So, you tell me to do it, I'll do it. It's purpose, it's totally okay to do that. I just have to have your permission, so.
It does seem a little funny to have a negative cash balance.
Inherently, when you, in my opinion, when you set this transportation department up, you said we're starting out with zero. So, when, when you said you went into the last year's activities and extracted in the general fund, revenues items and those expense items, is that correct to say that?
Yes, yeah.
You ended up with a negative figure.
Which didn't surprise me because.
Well, that implied, yeah, that, you know, the general fund did underwrite.
Recovered that, yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Which, the way it had been being run. I mean, Julie's been great in figuring out different ways to make money in it. Um, s- at some point, things, they tend to block that, physically block that from, I mean, the state department of transportation because they say, whatever you make, we reduce your grant by and, and there's that going on too.
Somebody's creative thing may not fit in their boxes.
If it's not square, it wouldn't fit in the box, their box anyways. Yeah, so, yeah, it's.
Things with rounded, big rounded things don't fit in square boxes.
It's something that we can do if that's what you want to do. So, I just need to hear that from you guys. It's done.
So, what documentation would we need for something like that?
Um.
Just a sideline note on the, the adjustment that you put in there or? Or is that something we need?
Donna, what would you wanna see? A resolution, Adam?
Probably a resolution.
Resolution for that one?
Directed her to do what you want her to do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, I can bring that forward with a second reading, if that's what you want me to do.
Why don't we let the council kinda think about it and make sure that they have a chance to absorb it and then give us that information by this Friday, so that way we can put it on the next agenda.
Works for me.
I, I, I don't really need to think about it. Just inherent that that be an allocation of your general fund balance. You might even wanna run that past the auditors, but, you know, make sure they're agreed with the fact you're establishing a transportation fund.
Yeah. So, the way that the auditors think about it, and this is a conversation I had with them last year when we were considering moving this outside the general fund. He said, he was somewhat nonchalant about it. He says, it's however you wanna carry your books. So, then the, it keeps the, the, um, the details kinda, what they do is they lump the major funds together anyway, and this would be lumped into general fund anyway, so.
Well, there's been the, the street department is, you know, a lot bigger than that, but.
Right.
That there's certain people that, the street department, it's a separate fund and you maintain it that way. But in reality, it's really part of the overall general.
In the audit, it's part of the general fund, yes. Yeah, so.
Yeah, and this is, you know.
Similar.
One, five percent of the size of the street department, maybe even less, three percent.
Sure. Yeah. So, I don't know. Anyways, it would float inside the general fund, fund balance anyway, uh, on the audit. So, it's totally up to you guys. I can bring a resolution, that would make me feel better. If that's what you want me to do. On a continuous basis, you know.
Oh, resolution.
Adam, that resolution just states that we're establishing, 'cause have we ever taken action to establish a transportation fund?
I have, not a transportation fund. I have rolled a couple of funds outside of the general fund in previous employment, but not the transportation fund, and this one's pretty well regulated.
I, I know in the, some of the legal paperwork that city clerk does, she says, these are our funds.
Yeah, and that was included when we passed the resol- that resolution.
So, now that would be added, this would be added to the.
And I thought we did do that, but.
We did.
But maybe that, I'm getting that mixed up with another fund, maybe.
No, no, I made sure we got it in there when we did it.
So, I was thinking we created that when we when the decision was made.
Passed the book. Yeah.
The transportation out there on its own.
Yeah.
A year ago?
Yeah.
Last year, okay. Then that's already done.
You may have taken care of it, but you may not need to do anything more.
Yeah.
I thought the resolution was in regard to the general fund, zero, your transfer, zeroing it out. Do we need a resolution for that, or can we just make that part of the books?
'Cause if those dollars are within what's budgeted.
Yeah, it was all budgeted. It was never not budgeted.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think you'd.
It's just all that accounting on how that, on having a fund balance that is split off from the general fund tree.
Do we need to research this?
We might wanna talk to DOT auditors and see if they're.
Okay. That's a good idea. I can certainly.
See if they'd be, what they'd be comfortable with.
Since they're the ones who need to, you know.
That they'd be comfortable with what, though?
Well, that's the question.
They're the ones who asked us to do it.
Yeah.
So, but.
Well, they're gonna wanna a resolution to do, to show that you were given authority.
To transfer the funds.
To do what, to do what they want you to do, see, I think. Is that right?
Okay, 'cause.
I don't know, I don't know, it's an audit.
I don't see the budget book from last year, but I'm pretty sure we had that resolution setting up the funds for the following year. It's in the budget book.
They said they may not want anything more. They may be perfectly satisfied with that. That's what we gotta answer to ultimately.
Right.
Only thing I have to be worried about is if we go back and say, yeah, we have a general fund transfer, that they would look at that and say, you know, if that would, for some reason, affect what they're going to reimburse us for on grants. And I, I don't assume it would. I don't know how it would, but I also don't know anything about any of this. I'm just a moron up here saying words, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't think so.
Now, on the flip side, if we start moving things around, the state auditor's gonna wanna know what we're doing too. And that's where a resolution may come into play as well.
Okay, um, and I, I, I think Donna went to get that, uh, budget book from, for the current year. And I'm pretty sure that's what we did, is set up the Fund Thirty-Six.
As I recall, when we set that, yeah, did that resolution for the funds, I believe it was in there.
Transportation was its own fund last year when we established the funds.
Okay.
So, somewhere between before September of twenty twenty-three, that fund was created to stand on its own.
And I don't think we had that in the previous year, that, so first year I was here, so. So, yeah. But is that sufficient for the current year?
We're, we're gonna have to talk with, I think, auditors, maybe, maybe at both levels to see.
Yeah.
What balance did we have?
Two sixty-seven.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll know anything productive until you have something from them. But I think us, council, we just, we don't love seeing negative numbers. I don't know about you guys. Just, I feel more comfortable if the numbers are not negative.
Wait a minute. To, to quote a, a very wise council member, they're just numbers.
Yeah, it's all just numbers. That number is, looks a little funny though.
Yeah.
And that number has bad vibes.
Yeah.
If, if maybe we need to talk to auditors to get a number that has good vibes, then I'm happy.
That doesn't often happen.
It's, there are, um, there is a Fund Thirty-Six in that one. So, I, we established that for the current year. The twenty, the Fund Thirty-Six we established for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. So, so, yeah, the twenty-two, twenty-three numbers in the budget book in what you're looking at, those are, I took, took those numbers and rolled them directly into their own fund. Same account number, same everything.
Yeah. Even though during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget year, it was still in the general fund, yeah.
It was part of the general fund, correct.
Yep.
One, one more quick question.
Yes.
So, I, I couldn't find it here, but I, I think I remember reading something about a water project and it's for, just as a, as a note, it said about a hundred and fifty thousand per, uh, dollars per block. Is that?
The, the water transfer that we had, that water is doing under eighty-one, Fund eighty-one and eighty-two, we're asking the water department and the wastewater department to transfer money over to start the process of working on the, uh, North Main project for infrastructure.
Right, and I think it was.
Is that, is that what you were looking at?
It was just a note somewhere that said that it, the cost of doing the Water Main project is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per block.
Right, in the narratives, that's where that is.
Does that? Right, right, okay. So, does that include, I know when they, they mill off the asphalt and rain, landing asphalt, it's, oh, he's, okay.
Each city block of band replacement costs a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
A hundred and forty thousand dollars. But that, does that include redoing the street as well?
No.
No, that's just.
That's just the Water Main itself.
And so that's, when we redid over by Sixth Street, that was like a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per block or somewhere around that range. It's over a hundred thousand.
For the streets.
Yeah, just for the street. So, so in order to do a street, we're talking, you know, if you do that and.
I think the numbers, I think the numbers we used to use when we were looking at contracting stuff. Tell me if I'm way off base here. I think it was, we were figuring for a block of remove and replace just the pavement, it was about a hundred and eighty grand that you would need to budget for to get in the neighborhood of your, you know, when we were doing full block replacements every year. That's about what we were looking at. And that was asphalt. That wasn't concrete. Is that, is that ballpark-ish? Does that sound?
It's close, but it just depends, yeah.
It would be more, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's variables, but.
Well, I guess what I'm coming down to is, is the, the money that we're spending on these projects that we've been pigeonholing away. Um, I believe you mentioned in the, like, the one, three, and five year plans, maybe I'm wrong, there was two, four, and six. You mentioned North Main Street. If we utilize these funds now, are we gonna be able to accomplish?
North Main?
Yes, that's, I guess my, that's what I'm coming down to.
We're gonna be working with MC Shaft and, and having them help us get some more concrete numbers. I think the preliminary numbers for North Main, and Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it like one point four, one point five million for the entire project? And that was three years ago, four years ago? And so we have been starting to get some numbers, but what we're looking at for like this year's numbers with the water and wastewater is to see if we can start getting some of the engineering and maybe even getting some of those projects started to see if that is something that's even feasible to do in phasing this next year. So, that's, that's where we're moving some of the money.
We know we have to do stormwater.
Right.
And you have to, we have to do that probably first. So, we gotta start somewhere. And the stormwater we could take out of the wastewater budget. We've got so many needs that, we have to start somewhere, so.
Yeah, that's.
We're gonna do it just by guesses.
I think it's a, the, similar in a way to the First Street and Main Street project. I think the North Main project will require bringing to bear every department of the city, um, in certain ways, and perhaps using some, um, bonding authority, using economic development funds, you know, something like that to bring it all together for a worthy cause. And if it's, you know, spread out, like Tom was saying, you know, just, especially the engineering. I have always blown away at the expense of getting engineered plans. But, you know, if Tori uses his money to purchase, you know, to pay in, in for engineering, then that's, once you have that, then you can, you can start, you know, getting bids and, and stuff like that down the road. Uh, those are good for a while. So, that would be one way to, as you're, as, you know, in future years, as you're kind of marshaling the resources between streets, water, wastewater, um, and whatever grant funds, whatever economic development funds, if you make those investments now and start doing some of the stuff now, you'll be in, I think, a lot better position.
And, and we had a very, very good meeting, first preliminary meeting with MC Shaft, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, which they actually physically came up here and we, boots on the ground, walked the areas, and they got some suggestions. And he brought his street guy, right?
His street and his, one of the water crews?
I didn't think he brought, no, it wasn't either. It was just two of them.
It was just his street guy.
It was Dave and the street guy Adam, I think. But, um.
It was a very good meeting. I was, I was impressed. I didn't think we'd get that far.
And, and it sounds very positive. So we are moving the wheels, but obviously moving slow.
We move at the speed of government.
But I am pleased that we think we can get our top coat done and we can possibly get about ninety-nine blocks of asphalt blocks throughout the community. And that's one thing that we think we can get done for this next fiscal year. And, uh, that will help us prolong the, the life of the streets that we do have, and maybe give us a little more time to figure out how we're gonna do some of the other major rehabs. And I still would encourage, as councils reviewing any of these, send emails to Michelle, myself or Michelle, and then we can research that information and we can compile those questions up and present that at the next meeting, saying, these are the questions that were asked, cause obviously, there's gonna be times where you guys, somebody else might be thinking the same thing. And have no problem being able to put that information out, so we have that.
Any questions? If not, I'd like to close this public hearing at six fifty-five. And a motion to.
Make a motion.
Special meeting.
We'll make a motion to close this special meeting.
I'll second that. Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe, to close the second special meeting. The public hearing. We have a roll call, please.
Shepherd.
Uh, yes.
John Dura.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Been about an hour. Do you guys wanna take a break before we?
I think I can make it, George.
You ready to go?
I'm doing all right. All right. Good?
Yeah, I was getting ready to say the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to call this meeting, regular meeting, the Shatterin City Council, over. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight of Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the opening meeting act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door of the city council chambers. Could we have roll call, please?
George Klein.
Yes.
Miles Bennett.
Present.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Joe Junder.
Here.
We have a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane to approve the agenda. Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Junder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe to approv, approve the consent agenda. It includes correspondence, uh, the Pine Ridge Scott Job Corps is hosting an open house in Carsha with Pine Ridge Scott location for their sixtieth anniversary. The cele, cele, celebration is scheduled for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, which is, I believe, a Friday. There's an invitation in our thing, our information out there for the general public, um, if they, uh, would like to go to that, they might RSVP to sent merchant by calling three zero eight, three six zero, six eight six six, or completing the survey on the QR code on their flyer, which I've, printed out or, I believe, off the internet, so seems to be an open limitation. And also behind this tab is a copy of the article written by Carrie Rimp, otherwise known as Moonlighter for the Shatterin Record.
Shatterin.
K, KCSR, I'm sorry. Shatterin Communications. Nice article regarding Shatterin's open frontier designation. And there are no minutes from other boards of commissions, and it has a monthly treasures report for June twenty twenty-four, and special designated license is administratively approved for the Ridge for wedding reception at the fairgrounds on, for July the twentieth, which has already happened. So, item B on the agenda, uh, could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
Junder.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to introduce Robert Sanchez, the new water wastewater operator. Uh, Tori, would you, would you come up and introduce him?
Uh, Tori Zuber, uh, utility superintendent for the city of Shatterin, and, um, after about five months searching and interviewing, um, we have our new guy, Robert Sanchez.
Hey, guys. Mr. Sanchez, you're glad to have you aboard, or how'd you get here? Are you local?
I actually moved back to take care of my parents. They got in a rough car accident back in two thousand twelve, so. Not only that, is to help out with me and my kids. Take care of three on my own, ten, eight, and five. So, they're all, um, in a good school system. I went to school here too, back in the day, so, um, I mean, it's just like home to me, so here we are.
Where'd you come, move from?
I moved from Sydney, Nebraska.
Oh, okay.
I was up there for a while, actually, by twenty nineteen. I worked at Agroplasis, was my old job. That was a, um, uh, rotor molding company that made cow huts for, uh, dairy farmers. So I was over there for a while. That was probably five, four or five years, so. Got a lot of background with that, but this is a new journey and I'm ready to do it. It's fun too. I like learning new stuff, so.
Well, welcome back to Shatterin.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome back.
Thank you.
Betty was a long time Shatterin employee. Any relation to Betty Sanchez?
Uh, yeah, that would be my aunt, I believe. I think my dad worked here too, uh, the street department. It was Bob Sanchez. And then he, um, worked as a janitor at the school system, so, yeah.
So Poppy would be a cousin?
I believe so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Glad to have you. Appreciate you living up in the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine, uh, regarding fees for the next year. Um, ordinance, could we have the ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is before the council for its first reading. Please read ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine by title.
An ordinance to establish the amount of certain fees and taxes charged by the city of Shatterin for various services, including but not limited to building and use, zoning, library, occupation licensing, and pet licensing, water, sewer, and drainage systems, and facilities of the city for residential users and commercial users, including industrial users of the city of Shatterin for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances and to provide for an effective date.
Okay. We are open for discussion. Um, I imagine they'll be pointing towards the highlighted items in red that are indicated changes. I think they're generally increases. Maybe there's a decrease or two.
Well, there's not a decrease, George, I'll tell you that right now.
Transit there was.
Yeah, there quite a few.
Transit there was, yeah, there was.
We're gonna discuss more about the transit thing.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as for the most part, Janet took it on, uh, like she normally does, to ta, contact most of the supervisors, and she did, uh, get some suggestions for, and just starting off with the first one on page two with the airport, the hundred thirty to a hundred and fifty per month for the carousel hangar, bulk hangar rate from fifty to sixty dollars. Um, and then when you start moving down through the line, anything that's red is gonna be, uh, questionable. Uh, Scott did put something on moving the body on the inside cemetery from two thousand to twenty-five, a hundred dollars, and moving body outside the cemetery from five hundred to a thousand. People have to realize, uh, you know, when you're moving a body inside the cemetery, you're doing double the work. And so that's something that people don't consider when they're doing some of those things. And so when costs go up on doing those things, cost of labor, cost of materials, it does cost money to do those things, and it's just, we're needing to get caught back up on more of those things too.
We, we did do a little rate increase last year, is that correct?
Yes.
But it's, cost of doing business is just more.
It is, it is. And when you start thinking about what the new, uh, wage laws are going on, into effect, and then realize that, um, our labor shortage, I mean, that's about the best I can call it. Just like, uh, Tori Zuber was saying, it took us five months to replace a water operator, water wastewater operator. And that's what we're seeing more and more of as we look at these, uh, positions that become available. And we're not the only company or business throughout the cities that's looking for these people too. A lot of other businesses throughout the community are shorthanded as well. And then, uh, we did raise the solicitors, and one of the things that we talked a little bit about, we had some research done throughout the other communities, but we wanted to have the solicitors and the mobile food vendors all at the same price as the firework stands, which should be, makes sense in, in my mind, that that would be the way we'd wanna handle some of those things, so that those would be, uh, similar. And that's on page six. And then as far as going down with, um, the occ, uh, the occupation fees on page seven, we are going to ask electricity to raise that up from twelve-five to thirteen percent for the franchise fee, which will help us, uh, get a little bit further ahead than what we're doing right now. And then Julie in the transit, she gave these numbers, and Julie had meetings last week, and I had meetings last week, and then she's off to a conference. These are some of the things that she's lowering, and I'm thinking that she's wanting to see if she can increase some of her business, but the cost of doing bu, goods may not justify some of those things. So, that is still a question that I, I would like to talk to Julie more in depth, find out where she is on some of those transit items. And then, um, one of the things that we've been working on with the sewer utilities is we do know that we're a little low on our overall, tap fees. And then we also put in a new line that the council needs to be realized, sewer district tap fee determined by ordinance. And basically what that means is that when we set up this district, um, when we are doing this, we want to make sure that we can set the tap fee to recover amount of monies to, uh, be able to have those improvements on there. It's not fair for those that have, um, an existing water line that's been paid for previously, and then when we go in there and we put in thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements, and only charge that person four hundred and fifty dollars. It needs to be based on, on ordinance, based on what the cost of that sewer improvement and or, um, what, what would needs to be so that it, it's not all encompassing for the entire city. It needs to be responsible of those. And that's one of the things that I think, uh, council member Sheber, Shepherd brought to us initially, saying that, uh, out in the front range, a lot of those kind of districts are actually charging anywhere between eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars for those tap fees for those, as they're doing some of those improvements. And so, we're just looking at making sure that we have those available. And then, obviously, everybody's wanting to know what, uh, our utilities are gonna be doing. And Janet, Tori, and, and Lori have put their heads together. They're going to be looking at a, a plan of doing, uh, basically a ten percent increase for this year. And just to give you an idea, um, of what it is on, on an average water bill for somebody that uses approximately three to four hundred cubic feet of water uh, through here, and just a reminder, seven hundred and fifty gallons is one hundred cubic feet of water. And that's generally for a household of, of, uh, up to four people. Uh, unless they have teenagers, then it's a little higher because they use a lot more water. But, um, you know, if they're using that kind of amount, we're raising it from two fifteen to two thirty-seven, which is approximately twenty-two cents. So, on that water bill would be sixty-six cents for the water usage itself. And then for a person that has the three-quarter inch tap would be approximately a dollar forty, so on average, for a, a good majority of the residents of the Shatterin would be looking at about a two-dollar increase on their utilities bill based off of that ten percent increase. Now, obviously, if you use more water, do other things, but that's what a general bill for, for that. But they would also have the capability of, of controlling what they use and how they wanna do certain things throughout the area. Now, with that being several questions that have been asked about the utilities, the sewer, we're gonna be looking at a ten percent increase next year as well. And that is something that's been, been done by the state, uh, by our auditor, saying that we're still behind on getting caught up to what they are normally expecting to see. And so we want to do that. And then the following year, three and four, we're probably looking at around that five percent, um, increase for the next four years is what we're hoping to try to do, so that you have an idea. And then as far as the golf course, I know that's been a big subject for people in the past, we're looking at increasing that, and that's on page eleven. Their basic rate, and they use, you know, between that five thousand and in excess of ten thousand. We're gonna raise the water rates of twenty-two cents per hundred cubic feet up to twenty-four cents. And I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but the number is, is, is pretty, uh, convenient considering what, uh, the water they have and availability on that. Is there any questions that, um, I know Janet compiled a lot of these things, and Janet, did I miss anything on the?
The only thing you did, Janet, was the credit card fees.
Oh, thank you. Credit card fees, I'm bringing it up to the council, thank you Janet. Um, we did approve last year a two point five percent transaction fee, and this is on page eight, or seven, excuse me. Um, we did that for all utility billing, and I just wanted to bring it up. I'm not recommending it, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, um, or we could do it, but it is something I wanna bring up to the council to make sure that they have an opportunity to vote for it or against it, but for all credit card transactions that we have throughout the city. And we do have that capability of doing such. Janet, was there anything else I missed, or is there anything else that you could add, or?
This is the one thing that was in their rep that you didn't highlight.
Okay. So with that being said, is there any questions or, or concerns that you guys would have based on this information? And, uh.
Where are you giving up more information?
That's correct, whatever, whatever we can do for you. Being the first reading, we're not, we're not sure where we were at, um, with it, so we're just throwing some numbers out to start the conversations.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. And I know like with the water rates, we based it off of what the auditors had given us. And if you remember what, I don't have the sheet in front of me. Um, we were behind on our water, uh, comparable to other comparables for their communities, and, um.
Projected revenue of the ten percent is, um, ninety-two thousand dollars.
That's what the ten percent will bring in.
Yes.
Estimated.
Estimated.
And just as a very.
And that's, and that's off of the revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three, since we don't have the total revenue for twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's a revenue a year ago.
And just for the council's memory, it's a hundred and forty to, or more for one block of water main. And I would ask the council to refer back to the water master study as far as the needs and wants of that. Uh, not only for the water, but for the wastewater, and for any of those studies that we've done to show that we need to have some more increases.
And I don't know if any of you have really, um, paid attention, but in the last couple of weeks, we've had multiple water main breaks on the two hundred block of Anne. And they've been bad breaks. It's a bit, really good that it has been this time of year and not the frozen time of year. And they're not little breaks either, they've been, you know, chunks of main several feet long.
And that's been steel lined.
Yeah, it's a four-inch steel line. So it's like Fourth Street, when we were break after break after break after break within twenty or thirty feet of each other.
Every time you touch the line.
Every time we touch the line, every time we turn the line on or off. So Tori has been cussing quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. We're out of parts right now, so hopefully nothing happens in the next week because parts are on order, they're supposed to be being delivered this week. So he's wanting to replace that block really, really bad, so.
So are the, a lot of these fees that have gone up, do they, we rise them up? Is it, is it, cause we haven't, um, haven't been rising them up in the past? Or is it cause that we're trying to get caught up with inflation?
I think it's a combination of different things. I believe the council's been very good about keeping the rates down to make sure that people can still afford to do the utilities. And I admire doing that, but there is a time where you have to start getting a little bit more aggressive on some of it, and that's why I told the Janet and Tori that we need to be aggressive and look at the ten percent and see if we can gain a little more ground, a little quicker. COVID really hurt a lot of the specialties, public safety, water, sewer, um, police departments, um, all these departments that really rely on some of those specialty equipment. And it seems like we cannot get recovered on them fast enough.
We still can't get parts. We've been waiting on a, a two-inch and three-inch meter for well over a year and still aren't getting them. We're shifting parts from community to community, paying each other back and forth when they come in. It's, it's still, we're not recovered yet.
It's, over my tenure at the council, we have been doing one year, five percent water, the next year, five percent wastewater. So you figure probably about an average of two and a half percent, that's about inflation. Um, so we haven't been, we haven't been getting.
We're not gaining any ground.
Yeah, we're not gaining any ground, people will still complain, I mean, certainly, you can ask everybody in town, they'll tell you, boy, their water bill's really gone up. Um, but in terms of what amount of money that provides in real terms for like a service the city can provide, we haven't been getting ahead of the needs, we've just been trying to keep, keep up with the.
Keep, keep below the water.
Yeah, so, uh, having a, having a year where you do a ten percent water, you're gonna have to. And if you look at the water study, uh, that we had done, you know, there, they lined up thirty-four million dollars of water systems improvements over the next twenty years, I think, something like that.
I think it's more than that.
I think, I was, I was thinking just to the middle, like just the middle term.
The middle term might be that.
The, the long term included, like, you know, we're gonna need another water tank. Um, you know, and you've got to run sixteen-inch, I think, main to those, or twelve-inch main. Um, and that's, you don't do a block of sixteen-inch main for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so. You know, it's, i- it's easy to just keep doing what you've been doing. Um, but having, saying, you know, we're gonna do a little extra, uh, it's kinda like with swan. You know, we've, we've been eating good, we, we got it real good. You know, compare, compare your Shadrin water bill to your Crawford water bill, uh, any of the places that Adam, you know, attorneys for.
You guys are cheap.
Yeah, ask him and tell you about those water bills.
Way too.
I know we are.
We have been very fortunate in our community to pay as low a bill as we have and to receive as many services we have, and it's, you know, we just need to, to stay on the ball so that we don't end up in a place in five years or ten years where there's an emergency project, and now it's, well, we need to do bombing, and your water bill's gonna double. Cause that has happened to communities, see, not, you know, smaller communities for certain, but even larger communities. That's been up too, it's just, um, you really have to, have the fortitude to just keep raising rates at a consistent pace.
Yeah, we're still nowhere close to being able to get, um, CDBG money for water and wastewater projects without
Yeah.
meeting the national, the national objective.
Cause you have to have a certain minimum rate, right?
Right, right.
To qualify for grant money.
Yeah, without meeting the national objective.
Two, three year citizens.
Correct.
So with that being said, is there any questions that we could possibly answer for you, or any concerns that you guys see with some of the rates that we're looking at?
Or if there's anything else in our fees that we need to increase? I mean, if there's something in there that you're dying to get information on that we need to increase?
The games of chance going up five X, what does that cover?
What page are you on, please?
That is page six, it's right above the mobile food vendors.
Thank you.
Is that, that's not, that's not a Keno thing, right? That's a, so it's like if you're doing like a raffle or something?
That's you, that's you, Tom, you wanted that one.
The games of chance are like those machines that, um.
That are in the bar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Slot machines.
Keno?
Not Keno.
No, like the, like the common sense that they don't have ICs anymore, cause they got the fake slot machines, the skill games.
Yes.
They can't call them, call it gambling, or call it slot machines or video machines, it has to be games of skill.
Yeah.
But.
So is that, is that a per machine, or just an establishment has to pay it to have them?
Um, I do need to have a conversation with Tom on that. There's some recent legislation that changed some of that on what communities can charge for games of skill that's effective then to this calendar year, that might have some
Bearing on that?
Bearing on this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
If that is what that is, I would be in full support of charging the maximum amount that the state puts us charge. Therefore, if, you know, if you wanna have those machines and you wanna have skilled games.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, they're an eyesore, they're just, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna do that, I think there's, I think it is totally fair to support the community through some fees.
Need any more information? Let me know.
Well, just out of curiosity, how often does somebody get moved within the cemetery? I just, I've always.
You know, it, it happens probably once a year.
Really? Just moved from one plot to another?
Mm-hmm.
Wha- what is a plot run out there, a chance?
A space?
Yeah, it's like what, four hundred, I think?
Well, the re, it's in there.
I thought it was four hundred and fifty is what we're proposing.
If that space is just four hundred, then, then the opening is four fifty.
It just depends on what time of year too, as far as that goes, cause if they have to do it during.
Yeah, it depends upon whether they were digging when it's frozen, and whether they have to move snow, and.
And it also depends on the size of it, whether it's a vault, or whether it's a cremation, so there's.
If you're just buying a space, it's four hundred, and if it's for a, a, an infant, then it's two hundred. And then, and Lori probably sells spaces a couple times a month, I would.
If not more. Depends on what life happens with people.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or life stops happening.
Yep.
So the, the space, that's for a, a body burial.
Or, or an urn.
Cremation.
Or cremation. They buy spaces for cremations.
So that's the same. So, so okay, if you're. Do you have to buy a whole space for each cremation?
Because they want the headstone.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to buy the same amount of room for a he, the space for the headstone.
But you can fit two cremations in one space.
Yes.
As long as there's one headstone.
Right, and you can usually put two names on one headstone.
Anyone have any other comments?
I'm gonna look this over. Might get that too.
Okay.
Please let us know, send us out questions so we can research and have the answers for you next meeting.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine has been read by title on its first reading.
Thanks Janet.
The second reading of ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine will be on August nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, resolution.
Now we gotta do the ordinance for the.
Do you have one more?
No.
Ordinance number fourteen forty. Ordinance number fourteen forty is before the council for its first reading. Please read ordinance number fourteen forty by title.
An ordinance to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, directing the publication of this ordinance, and prescribing the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Okay, um, discussion. When are this being saying information that we had in the budget hearing substantially in the. Allocation. No discussion additional. Ordinance number fourteen forty has been read by title on its first reading. Second reading of ordinance number fourteen forty will be on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I will introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-nine to move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-nine, which is to accept and approve a quick claim deed from E and L Holdings LLC in joining our Eisenbarth's for Lot Eight, rich view of fourth addition to the city of Shadrin, Dawes County, and Cedar, Cedar Buttes Development for future developments. Any discussion? We have, um, city furnished us with a aerial view of the, um, county assessor's information, and city already owns a lot to the north, and two lots to the south, and one diagonally to the southwest across the street. This, uh, we have to pay the back taxes plus interest um, in the amount of two thousand forty-two dollars and eighty cents, so. And we're, and in case anybody's wondering, we're not really getting that lot for two thousand forty-two dollars and eighty cents. Along the few years in the past, city incurred some expenses to get us in this position, so. Not like we're gonna profit a great deal if we, once we acquire it, and then we can try to develop it, put that street in and.
So that, um, the back taxes are figured to, for to, till tomorrow. So that's why the check is, um, computed through a payoff of to, till tomorrow. So if this is all decided tonight, and the resolution is passed, and George signs the check.
He said, better sign that check tonight.
I will take it up, I will take it up tomorrow morning, and we'll, we'll get it up there right away so that we don't have to pay another day's worth of back taxes on Lot Eight. And then, um, the goal is, is to, um, get some engineering for some sanitary sewer so that we can eventually get not lots eight, nine, or six, seven, eight, and nine developed because they need street, but to get three and four and five developed because once they have sanitary sewer, then those property owners that own those lots will have sanitary sewer, water, and street, and then those lots can be developed. So that is the goal.
So, so I see the yearly tax information on that property as of twenty twenty-three was two hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. Does that mean that the taxes haven't been paid on that for about ten years?
The taxes haven't been paid on it for about five years.
Goes back to twenty fifteen.
Nineteen, fifteen, but the delinquent taxes are at fourteen percent.
Four percent interest.
Yeah.
So that's why I don't wanna wait more than twenty-four hours to get that check up there. So. I had.
The actual tax amount is thirteen hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, but no difference, the rest of it's interest.
Right.
And for information, uh, the assessed value of that lot until twenty twenty-three was uh, around the seventy-five hundred dollar.
And then it.
The range now is thirteen thousand. Right.
So we're.
Assessed value went up.
So we're getting it at an opportune time.
Yeah. That kinda relates back to the previous thing that we were talking about with the new apartment development.
With Hartland flats, undeveloped property.
Yeah, that.
Yes.
The value of that land.
Value of the land has been increased.
County assessor. County assessor, um, has readjusted those things.
All property values.
So, any other questions? Thought we have roll call, please.
Shepherd.
Yes.
John Drew.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Thank you. We got it done, George.
Great.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy, move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy. Which is to renew the city's insurance services with alarm, otherwise no legal association or risk management. Is proposed that a renewal be for a three-year period for the city can benefit from a five percent discount. They have alarm as a program where they, you sign up, keep it rolling three years ahead to give you. A discount, if you sign up for less than three years, the discount goes down, so.
Along with a hundred and eighty-day notice too as well.
Yeah. So. Um, I think we've been well satisfied with having alarm as our insurance carrier.
I think they've done a really good job for the, the communities and as far as Nate and, and their crew working really, really hard to try to keep our rates down. When listening to the other towns and communities where they're saying that they can't even find somebody to insure some of their buildings. Is, has been a very, very, uh, it was a very wise decision by the, the city and the council to, uh, get alarm onboard when they did. Because I know there's communities out there that are struggling.
Okay, um, that being said, of course, if we don't approve this, then we gotta go shopping for insurance.
Yeah.
Which is probably not a pleasant task.
One of the worst years in human history to be shopping for insurance.
Uh, could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
John Drew.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Item G, should we have someone introduce?
I'll introduce, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one and, uh, move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane for resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one. Which is progress estimate number one and also the final for Top Coat Inc. for the twenty twenty-four armor coating street project. Which was Main Street, Third Street to Tenth Street.
As George.
Janet has information.
As George stated, this is number one and final for top coat in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three sixty-five eighty-two. We would hope that you would approve this and we'll get them paid. We're happy with the project, um, uh, they came in, did it very quickly and left town and.
I, I watched them a little bit and those guys seemed to know what they were doing.
Yes, and they have a lot better equipment than the last time they were in town, so.
Are you guys happy with everything?
So far, very happy, and actually they come out with some very good ideas for us to try to help prolong some of our streets and we're hoping. That when we get ready to do our bid from this next year, that they're putting their names in the hats again.
Yes, and hopefully can give us a good price with the quantity that we're hoping to be able to get done. Yes, I'm, I am happy with it. I know the public doesn't seem to agree, but I think they did a good job.
I thought it was great, the only, the only thing I, sometimes when I walk across the street and I go in the office, I'll have these little stones come out of my shoe. So I have to bend over and pick them up. Well, that was exercise, so.
I, I think, I think they did a, did us a good job.
Stones in the shoes better than weeds in the cracks.
That's right, that's right.
Supposed to take care of the cracks.
You got it.
Thank you.
Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd.
Yes.
John Drew.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay, brings up item number H on the agenda. Floor is yours.
Okay. Here we go. I didn't think this day would ever come, but here we are. I have a letter I'd like to give the council. We had an informal conversation at the last council meeting during executive session. I wanted to give the council heads up that this was going to be happening. So we did have some informal discussion last council meeting. But I have a letter I'd like to read to you, and it starts out with a couple comments. Okay. I started this letter over a year ago, and it was five pages long. It's no longer five pages, so. There's so much I wanted to say. I've been blessed with over fifty years of municipal government experience and knowledge. I've really enjoyed the work that I do. Every day is different. I've tried to learn something from everything that I've encountered. The special moments and memories professionally and personally over a fifty-one year period can define our overall experience. It has mine. Yes, there's been some challenges along the way, but I think taking everything into consideration. All of these experiences have made me a better and stronger person. I've always tried to embrace the good along with the bad, and I've always tried to take the high road. And do what was in the best interest of the city as a whole. As I said, the council's aware that I've been considering retirement, um, not only with our conversation a couple weeks ago. But actually, some of you have been aware of this for a couple years now, and we've had discussions. This happened especially after my husband Milo retired. I've set several dates along the way, and those dates have come and gone. In fact, my son Ben Rest is here tonight. Always appreciate his support. But I'm thinking his other motive for being here is I've told my family so many times, retirement's right around the corner. I've set so many dates. I think he's here to make sure I didn't back out. He's also my financial advisor, so. But I do appreciate you being here, it helps. But after a lot of pondering and a lot of input from my family, I've made the decision. There's still some hesitancy on my part. I think I'm re- I think I'm ready to resign effective the end of this fiscal year. Um, the following letter is written with a lot of mixed emotions. So having said this, um, my no- official notice of resignation simply reads. Mayor George Klein, Councilmember Miles Bannon, Councilmember Mark Graves, Councilmember Shane Shepherd. Councilmember Joe John Drew, my bosses. This letter is to inform you of my decision to retire from the city of Shadrin. After fifty-one years with the city, I have to say it's been an amazing and incredible journey. There've been some challenging and disappointing days, but overall, it's been a great experience. I would like to take this opportunity to express my deep gratitude to the citizens of Shadrin. For providing me with a fulfilling and rewarding career. Having spent the majority of my life with the city, I feel I've been truly blessed with professional and personal growth. Which I know I would not have experienced if I'd chosen a different path in life. I wish all the best for the city of Shadrin and its citizens. It's been an honor to serve and to be a part of the city of Shadrin organization for so many years. My official last day of employment with the city will be September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. As always, it seems, we're having computer problems. So I will have an officially signed letter for you. Um, this is going to be a big change for me, but I'm anxious to see what the next chapter in my life brings. My family has lots of plans for twenty twenty-five. And I'd ask my son if it's okay to mention he has an upcoming wedding this next year, twenty twenty-five. I have a grandson graduating from high school. Um, I have a sister having a seventieth birthday party, so we have a big family celebration planned. And I'm just thinking that one was supposed to be secret. But we have lots of traveling, fishing, camping, of course, with Milo and the family. But, um, again, thank you to the citizen, citizens of Shadrin, thank you to all of you. It's been an honor to serve. And I wish you all the best.
Goes without saying that city is fortunate to have you be here all these years, so. You know, I first met Donna when we moved here in eighty-one and I started, I was. The next year I was doing the audit and of course she was here and along with a number of people. Um, several years ago, um. An incident happened and Donna and I, one day I got a. Thank you card and it said, kinda just the way you started this tonight. It's taken me a long time to get to this point, but I finally sat down and just did it. And I, you know, the city is fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
You know, for all these years and. Somewhere around here, I think you took it home, there's a plaque there that's going to be hung up unless if you let us get it. Back.
Well, Janet's told me there's supposed to be a picture go with it and.
Oh.
So I'd, I'm not photogenic, so we may, we may have to. I don't know, but it'd be such an honor to.
Sure Ben has some photos around.
Be an honor to be next to Mr. Bevan B. And, uh, worked with him a long time and. You have a long ways to go, Adam.
That's a true story.
To make that fifty years, but it's an honor, but yes. Janet made sure we had a plaque and we'll have a picture to go with, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you just leaving it at that.
You belong on the wall as much as anybody else in here is ever deserved to be, it's, I, there's nothing anybody can say, but, uh. City, uh, you have not made the city stronger, better, and it's been a wonderful experience working with you, Donna.
Thank you.
And thank you, Donna, for all your service, and I hope twenty twenty-five brings some new excitement to your life and. In different ways than you can imagine, so, congratulations.
Thank you. And if there's any questions I can help you with or anything with the process, we did know if there'd be some discussion tonight, but.
Well, yeah, um, yeah, I. I was remiss when you had the agenda and for not saying, we need a little time to. And I probably shrugged it off, but we need to do it, um, so we need to open the position up, I think.
Cause do we actually, should there actually be a motion to accept?
The, it, yeah, the agenda item is you need a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay.
And vote on that.
Okay.
And then I suspect next meeting you'll have to put on the agenda how you wanna proceed forward, George. Cause there's really no, as far as. Accept her, take care of her tonight, and then we'll figure out.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
And then we'll figure out.
Well, that's what I was thinking, Ben.
Graves, I feel bad, cause it seems like we're running so close to September thirtieth in here, so.
I'm second guessing myself. Okay. Yeah. Well. Well, we'll, we'll deal with it, um.
Mayor Klein, I would move to accept the resignation of City Clerk Donna Rust.
I will second that. Motion by Miles, seconded by me to accept your resignation. Could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd.
I accept, yes.
John Drew.
Yes, with congratulations.
Thank you. Bannon.
Yes.
Did I say Klein?
Yes.
You didn't.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll put on the agenda the, um. Advertising for et cetera for, fill the position for next meeting. Okay, I make a motion to approve the claims as presented in our council packet.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Joe, approve the claims. Um. If you went down them, there's, um, some fairly significant things in there, of course, a. Rather hefty bill from mayors and associates on ground field assessment, um. There's some, they talked about, um, Janet did with problems with, uh. Getting water supplies, sewer supplies, the piping and stuff, there's fairly good. Bill for one of those, um, and of course the back taxes on the lot that we are acquiring. Um. And then, uh, kind of a significant item for me and I asked chiefs. Probably to discuss this, the lights and equipment for unit five, I. I just saw the, the invoice and I was. I knew it was expensive, but I didn't know it was gonna be twenty-some thousand plus, twenty-two thousand dollars plus.
Evening, Mayor, uh, council, Mayor Kegstein represents the Shadrin Police Department located at one twenty-five Main Street. Um, the cost of the install is what it is, that's new light bar, that's operating equipment inside, that's gun racks, that's the cage. The radio is a different expense, so that's the cost of putting in the, the radio in. Most of that bill, if you actually look at it, it's labor. Uh, labor's very expensive.
I did look at that, it was sixty-five hours or something like that.
Yep, they had the car for two weeks up there before we sold it back, right before fur trade. Uh, it's the cost of doing business. The only other option I have right now is to go down to Scotts Bluff, to a vendor we used to use. And they're not even doing it as frequently anymore, cause one of their guys retired. It's my understanding, but the work wasn't the same. We're very happy, we've been go- the last three years, three patrol cars, we've been using this vendor. And he does very quality work, he does all of Pennington County and Rapid Cities cars, so I think the expense that we put out there is worth the quality we actually get.
Well, that's what I, I wanted to make your comments on it.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, I'm very happy with the, the install.
Yeah. Um. Another significant thing was, uh, charged for WFI. Uh, water and wastewater, um, there was three thousand dollars of that forty-five thousand. Was the water, the removal from line and then nine sewers at forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars a pop. Do you have any information?
Yeah, I'll give you some updates on that. Um, one of the things that we have to do for the gallery, which is supplies of water in town here. Is we go out there and I think a lot of the older residents or people that have been around our community knows, we clean out the gallery. The gallery is a perforated pipe out there that gathers up the water, and so every year we have to go out there with our bucket machines. We do get occasions where we have sections of that line that need to be something done a little bit more aggressive than just the bucket machines. And so that's that three thousand dollars that they charged us for, to go out there, camera it and take a look at the pipe from the inside. It's an eighteen inch pipe or fourteen inch pipe, um, for our water supply here in town. To give you kinda an equivalency for what that is, is if you guys look at the water report, the gallery. the gallery had about fourteen, I don't know, one point four million gallons, I think is what it was. What they had for that. And so you've got to equivalent that to, and I don't even have it here, but you have to equivalent that to a well as far as what it's provided. So that gallery takes care of our wells for one well for us to do. So for three thousand dollars, it's a pretty economical price to have that updated and improved so we can keep the water coming into town. The forty-seven hundred and fifty times nine is when they go in the sewer lines here in town, they'll camera it, and they'll look to see if there's breaks, voids, anything that's done. And for them to go in there, they'll put in a sleeve appropriate for whatever size they need it to do. And just so that everybody has a better understanding of this. There are times where we can't do that, so you have to tear out the alley, go down, dig, replace the pipe, everything else. Do we know how much Eddie Bittner's going to be, ended up charging us for that alley repair down over here?
He hasn't billed us yet, Tom, but the concrete alone work for our guys is almost three thousand dollars.
So when you start considering that we can do the work from inside the pipes and beside the manholes, it's a very economical way for us to improve our sewer lines overall. And it's a very, I'm just going to say, it's a very time-efficient way to make sure that our alleys are still available for our citizens and for like Swan and our emergency response people and everybody else that has to use our alleys on those things. And so we did have nine of them that was located and repaired for them to do it. And I agree with Tori that we want to continue this process to just keep working throughout the entire community. It is a very effective and efficient way of using our city funds to keep the sewers running.
So for that forty-seven fifty, they're going down there, and they're applying essentially a liner to the interior of the sewer pipe.
It's a fiberglass liner. Depending on the size of it, they'll put up to, I think, eight foot long. And depending on what they are, these I believe are all four footers, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and once they put those in on that old pipe, it's stronger than the pipe itself.
Yeah, because they do like an epoxy coating or something, don't they?
Right. It's a fiberglass.
You've got a new pipe inside an old pipe. I mean, that's fantastic.
And so it's a very effective way for us to keep maintaining our sewer lines. And I know Tori's going to be looking at some actual manhole rehabs too, where instead of us replacing.
They're actually supposed to be here in the next two weeks.
And just so a prelude, that's going to be an expense that you'll see. But he waits until the end of the year to make sure he has enough monies to do that. And he allocates what he needs to make sure it's just improvement overall for the system.
I'm guessing Eddie Bittner's bill is going to probably be close to thirty grand.
I wouldn't doubt it.
Which alley is that?
The three hundred block between Anne and Chapin. We just opened it back up last Thursday.
So, but that, when you see that bill, that is what's costing that. So this is something to remember, and that's just for one repair that Eddie did over there for us, which is very appropriate for the expense. But for forty-seven fifty, we're able to take care of the one repair.
Yeah.
So.
You could do that with water lines.
They can, but it's way more expensive.
Well, that's what I needed, to do it to water lines for forty-seven fifty.
Yeah, the problem that we have, it's actually, it's pipe breaking is what they'll do. Pipe bursting. Exactly. Where they'll increase the size and drag the pipes through there, the problem is, is getting those guys up here.
Yeah.
It's not cost-effective for us up in the area yet. But it's coming. Any other questions that we might be able to answer?
That's all I had. Anybody have any questions about any? Oh, I did have one other. That Quadient Finance, there's a postage adjustment for twenty-seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And they have a sheet of paper, and it went back to twenty twenty-two.
Hi, Jen Wool, the accounts payable clerk. I can answer that question. I won't switch the camera. But when I checked the latest Quadient statement, we owed like twenty-five hundred something dollars, and I couldn't figure out why. And it's because in the past, past clerks were only accounting for the five hundred dollars when we refilled the machine each time. And so several payments got missed, probably in between clerks and in between people working. And so I went back to where it was current. And the spreadsheet shows which months were missed and what the amounts were. And then I used a three-month average to figure out how to allocate it to each department based on their usage for three months, and that's what the percentages are at the bottom.
So there's a lease payment on the machine and then an additional amount for, probably not dollars ran through, but for volume of documents to go through?
Uh, kind of. Yeah, the lease is one payment that's separate. And then each, like, when I send out the bills later this week, they'll be charged sixty-nine cents, I think, a piece. And then if water sends out boxes with their samples, those are charged according to how much they weigh. If the police department comes and mails things, it's charged to their department, sixty-nine cents for letters and then other things for packages.
To have the machine, and then you're just basically refilling the hopper of postage that you're applying out of that.
Correct. Instead of using stamps, we run it through the machine.
But almost every month, when Lori's mailing out bills, she comes and she wants me to sign a check.
That's.
Right, she.
That's the city's bulk mailing rate.
Bulk mailing.
Yeah.
There's no, Lori doesn't have to put each one of those twenty-five hundred water bills through the meter to apply postage. They actually, there's a pretty significant discount for a bulk mailing. So there's a separate, the main water bills are handled differently. That amount of postage coming out of the meter is just for the onesie twosie, you know, the stuff like the bills. When they're sending out the big mailing, that's why Lori has a separate check for that. And that's why there's an annual fee. There's three hundred and fifty dollar annual fee for the bulk mailing permit. And then Lori gets the highly preferential rate on those postcards.
Right, and since they're postcards, they're charged at a different rate as well. But that's a separate item that's accounted for under U.S. Postmaster. Is the, what Lori paid for sending out those every month, and it's probably about the same every month. So, but this is different. This is, yeah, every department that sends things through the workroom runs it through that machine in order to get it stamped and licked and sticked and everything ready to go, so. And I, over the next few months, there may be others like that where you're like, whoa, why is this so much different? But I'm trying to catch up some of these bills, figure out why either double payments were made, and then we don't have to pay the next month, or why months were skipped. Just trying to do some cleanup so that we're paying current bills as they come due each month.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, you know, I just like to know things.
It's good to have the double check. I look at Jen, she is catching a lot of these things. Changing some of the names, changing some of the things that we have so that we have the communications going. She's doing a very, very good job for us.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, have a roll call, please.
Shepherd.
Yes.
John Drew.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Okay, city manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the couple of things I just want to talk about is the ordinance regarding the weeds and grass, tree branches and such. And we've been getting several phone calls from different citizens. And I just wanted to bring up what some of the bigger concerns that we have throughout the city is any vegetation over the height of twelve inches must be trimmed down appropriately. That could be something that they have to be working on. Tree branches must be ten foot or higher from the ground level for any place underneath sidewalks or back in the alleys. And so that's some of the questions that were being asked. And then the other thing that we had been asked about was the intersection where vegetation is growing. And what we ask, and it's stated in the ordinance, is that any vegetation that's growing in a corner that could be obstruction of view must be three foot or lower. And that allows the motorized vehicles to be able to look over top of the vegetation. And so that's all I had for you tonight, George. Thank you.
Okay, we don't need resolution number twenty-four dash seventy-one, which would be excuse the absence of council members. Council closing comments, start with Shane.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say, other than colleges starting to come back, and there's going to be a lot of kids out in the streets and poor traffic, so just feel a little cautious. And I'm going to throw in that the last, I think it's the last, bands on Bordeaux for the chamber is Thursday, next Thursday. Right, the fifteenth? Yeah, so that's all I had.
Yeah, welcome back to school. A lot coming on really quick, too early. Watch out for the kids as we get ready to navigate all that. The fair's just wrapped up. I wanted to thank everybody that was part of making the fair successful again. The Dawes County Ag Society, the Nebraska Extension of Dawes County, the 4-H Council, the superintendents, and the buyers for the various items that were for sale out there. And every 4-H'er, parent, grandparent, friend, club leader, whatever it takes to keep 4-H alive and well. Thank you very much. It's important to me, and I'm so happy to see Dawes County Fair thriving. I want to keep that going.
Well, they covered everything that was pretty well on my list, so I want to thank you all, the fair organizers and the participants. Reminder about Shadrin State College starting on the nineteenth. And I even looked up the city schools, and they also start on the nineteenth. Like Shane mentioned, bands on Bordeaux on the fifteenth. But I want to reiterate the Job Corps on the sixteenth. They'd probably like to see a lot of people come out. And they've been a big help to the City of Shadrin for many, many years and lots of projects. I can think of one that, uh, the, they did the stucco work out at the visitor's center, the Chamber of Commerce office. That's kind of a one thing that I was involved in in years past. So appreciate the Job Corps.
And that's on the sixteenth?
Yes.
Special day of the Janet.
Are we supposed to be having a birthday party upstairs?
Sorry to throw that in.
I wanted to say thanks to Michelle, and thanks to all the staff department heads. Thanks to Tom and Donna and Katie for working on this budget this year. You know, this is a professional process. I've been very happy with the information coming and going. Can't express how much I think that we do budgeting well here. And I'm very pleased with looking at this budget, seeing the amount of money that we're investing in our community and the ability to take on some projects. That's a big change from where we were ten years ago when things were very tight. So to be able to say that, yeah, we can actually look at doing an amount of top coat, doing an amount of water main replacements, being able to look at increasing rates, and being able to stomach some of the capital expenditures that we've got in this budget. Just, it's very encouraging, and I know that nobody outside of the city council, the city government really under, has an appreciation for just exactly how much of a relief that is. But hey, you know what? Good government is boring, and it should be. And I just want to appreciate, to express some appreciation publicly for everybody who had a part in putting that all together.
Well, I won't say too much because I asked too many questions during the.
Yeah, Mark.
I just want a heartfelt gratitude to Donna and for the years of service that she's given to the City of Shadrin.
Thank you.
And her wealth of knowledge and expertise will be missed.
Here, here.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'll second it. Motion by me, seconded by Shane. We have a roll call, please.
Shepherd.
Yes.
John Drew.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Good night, all.